I open this session of the Upshur County Commission. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is just by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Jackie? Again, we thank you for your efforts. I'm glad you're back.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
The County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at courthouse annex on Thursday, June 25, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to order. There were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Terry Cutright, Commissioner, Terry Wallace, County Administrator, and Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, and Tony Newman, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading both the minutes on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of June 19, 2015, with the following corrections on page 1, paragraph 9. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved not to pay the prevailing wage to workers on construction projects costing $500,000 or less, as was approved by the state legislature. Commissioners stated that due to economic circumstances, they feel they are responsible to county residents to pay no more than is necessary for work performed. And on page 3, paragraph 5, after discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission denied the request made by James Perry. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the following county financial institutions as depositories, as required by West Virginia Code 7-6-1. Freedom Bank, First Community Bank, JP Morgan Chase Bank, Premier Bank, Progressive Bank, and First Central Bank. The Commission reviewed correspondence from Carol Jordan, underwriting manager of WB Corp. in closing the self-insurance renewal package. Terry Wallace provided a note. He explained that there was less than 1% increase. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the West Virginia Association of Counties Group Self Insurance Rescue Pool Cover Sheet in member agreement. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the termination of Deputy Sean Congrat, effective June 23, 2015, as recommended by David Kaufman, Upshur County Sheriff. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the appointment of James Perry to fill the Upshur County Enhanced Emergency Telephone Advisory Board vacancy for a three-year term effective immediately as requested by Corporal Rodney Rollinson, E-TAB Chairman. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the appointment of Kathy McMurray, Seminole, Emil Butcher, Carl Martin, Rennie Hull, and Daya Wright to fill positions on the Upshur County Development Authority Board as requested by Seminole, the Upshur County Development Authority President. Terms will begin July 1, 2015, and then June 30, 2018. Dave Thomas was approved to fill the unexpired term of Tom Shaw, which ends on June 30, 2016. J.C. Rafferty, you reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from Russell Rollison, Senior Deputy State Auditor, County Collections Division, enclosing a list of properties that will be offered for sale on July 29, 2015. Two correspondence from Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, to Donna Matthews regarding her interest in the Upshur County Civil Service Board vacancy. Three Upshur County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, smoking linked for half the deaths from major cancers in people over 35 article. Four correspondence from Robert Orendorf, Senior Policy Advisor, State and Local Affairs Division, providing a safety update. Five, NCC Corporation of America, important safety information brochure. Six, agendas and our meetings, none. Seven, meeting minutes as listed. Eight, meetings as listed. Nine, appointments needed are upcoming as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. Dr. Susan Aloy, Lee Ann Brown, C.J. Robbins, and Amanda Hayes, who are next Upshur County Representatives, appeared before the Commission and presented the findings of the steering committee. The Committee identified four common themes for making Upshur County the best place to live and work: communication, collaboration, recreation, expectation. Terry Jobb, Upshur County Building Permit Officer, appeared before the Commission to discuss the memorandum of understanding between Upshur County and Buchanan Volunteer Department. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the MOU. Chief Deputy Mike Kelly appeared before the Commission to discuss a request for retirement service credit. On motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission adjourned executive session at 10:30 a.m. President, or J.C. Rafferty, Troy Brady, Terry Cutright, Terry Wallace, Tabitha Perry, and Mike Kelly. The Commission returned to open session at 10:35 a.m. No decisions were made in the executive session. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Officer Kelly's request to grandfather Mike Kelly and Dala Ripple in current sick leave policy, which was adopted in May of 2014. Mr. Kelly accumulated 120 days of sick leave and Ms. Ripple 13.5 days of sick leave lost when they willfully severed employment from the county for longer than six months will be reinstated for use towards their retirement credit. No other current employees were affected by the policy and thus no lost sick time will be granted moving forward. Commissioners expressed gratitude to Officer Kelly for his service. With no further business, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the Commission adjourned at 10:45 a.m.
Thank you, Jackie. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes as read? If not, I would request a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ginture. We have two appointments this morning, one at 9:45. It will be Derek Burnside, will be here to discuss a discussion regarding emergency medical services parking lot. And we have a 10 o'clock appointment with Donald Delaney, Ambulance Administrator, Emergency Site Protection LLC, a formal deduction into Upshur County. And then at 10:15, we have Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy, for discussion acceptance of resignation. So we'll move out to the items for discussion until our first appointment at 9:45, straight by follow. Okay, correspondence from Steve Abel requesting consideration to fill the vacancy on the Upshur County Civil Service Board's 40-year unexpired term set to expire 12/31/2017. Do you wish to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to remove myself from the room.
Reason for your refusal?
For hitting the rep.
Okay, you may remove yourself from the rep. Commissioner Cutright had him removed himself from the room and accusing himself because of a relationship with the nominee. I will call for a motion to approve the request for Steve Abel to be considered for the vacancy of Upshur County Civil Service Board. Is there such a motion? I will make that motion. Is there a second? There is not a second. Therefore, that is a dead issue.
So we will still be looking for someone to fulfill that vacancy. That must be either Democrat or independent.
Okay. Maybe call Mr. Cutright back. So that motion dies without a second. Continuing, correspondence from Donald Rice, Upshur County Assessor, requesting the employment of Deborah Barnes on a temporary part-time basis effective July 13, 2015. She will be compensated out of revaluation fund at the wage rate of $21.03 per hour working under 25 hours per week.
I would like to throw up that. The agenda states 2103 because that would have been Ms. Barnes' wage if she were to still be working here after the dollar an hour was given to her online in 2015. However, agreement between the Assessor, Donnie Rice, and Ms. Barnes was $22 an hour. This wage would be taken from valuation, so it is a budget managed by the Assessor. But that was the agreement between the Assessor and Ms. Barnes.
It is funding will not come from general revenue funds. Okay. And she had experienced previous experience in the Assessor's office, and at this point in time, they need the extra manpower to prepare the records.
I believe it was around 20 years since she's been here.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve Mr. Rice's request for temporary employment of Duddy Barnes? Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have correspondence from Jerry Kimball announcing that the West Virginia Classic Wheels Car Club will be hosting the annual Glass from the Past event in downtown Buchanan during the weekend of July 24 and 25, and requests for donation in support of that event. Mr. Kimball, would you like to make a statement in support of your request?
Yes, I will. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. You've never called me sir before.
Look, pardon.
Never called anyone a sir before, so let's start off.
I'm Jerry Kimball, local resident. I belong to the West Virginia Classic Wheels Car Club, and we are putting on a show this what's the last full weekend in July. And we're inviting car owners from all over the state, adjoining states, to come and participate. And the money that we raise from this goes to help buy baby seats for newborns at St. Joe for parents that cannot afford it. They will not allow the child to leave the hospital unless they're in a baby seat. Also, we send a smoke detector home with every child, or we try to. Of course, we're the ones supplying the money, and we work with the auxiliary at the hospital. We also work with Lowe's. They are in on this too. So it's just a cooperation of a lot of people, and it takes a lot of money to do this, so...
You've been doing this for how many years, Jerry?
This is the fourth year that we've put this program on. Even before that, our monies went to these programs, but it's a way of raising a little bit more money.
I know you give all of your money away. It's not like you maintain a large treasury.
Right. We use it, then at Christmas time, and also help the Salvation Army, we generally adopt anywhere from five to maybe 10 families to take care of.
Thank you.
It's all, all the monies is used in a good fashion, I'll put it that way.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Having heard Mr. Kimball's request, further and so forth, request, is there a motion to approve a contribution from the County Commission? If that motion is made, is there a dollar amount that is suggested?
I'll make that motion, and I suggest that we make a donation of $250. We would like to make more than that, but this time I feel good with $250 donation. And thank you for everything you have done, Mr. Kimball.
Would you folks like to have a banner put up in the honor of the Upshur County Commission?
I don't think I'd like to see you use that money.
Don't use that money for any banner.
I would prefer a win.
Now, I would like for you to add in your motion, buddy, if you would, 10 pool passes, 10 one-day, for them to raffle off or just give away as they feel they'd like to.
And I'd be happy to do that and hope that generates a little bit more money. I do appreciate everything you do, Mr. Kimball.
Thank you.
So if I have it, we have a motion for a $250 cash contribution and 10 one-day pool passes for use as seen fit by the fire club. Is that correct?
Yep.
Is there a second to that motion?
I think so.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Back again.
Next, we have approval and signature of inspection agreement between Brewer and Company of West Virginia Incorporated and the Upshur County Emergency 911. This company inspects according to the current National Fire Protection Association additions, installation twice per year, and will report to the subscriber all needed items of maintenance and/or repair and replacement, which, in judgment of the company, may be necessary. This is a, basically a semi-annual inspection of the 911 facility to ensure that it's in compliance with fire safety standards. So do I have a motion for the authorized President to execute that agreement?
I'll move to you to agree.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have approval of Chief Tax Deputy Job posting. Application resumes, resumes are due by the close of August on Monday, July 13, 2015.
I would ask that you take hold that decision until you have Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy, appear before you at 10:15.
Very good. Moving to our items for information, we have correspondence from Robert Cunningham, Public Engineer, Deputy State Highways Engineer, Programming and Planning, enclosing statewide transportation improvement plan, listing of proposed amendments to the approved 2014-2019 STIP, which is the statewide transportation improvement plan. And reviewing that correspondence, we find that there are a number of projects that are contemplated for Upshur County. In fact, I think we have seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, excuse me, no, seven. We have seven projects totaling 200, 350, 400, over half a million dollars that are planned for Upshur County to include bridge replacements, installation of traffic signals, slashers, and retrofitting in various roads. So it's good to see that we're having some movement on improving the traffic and as well as highway maintenance in Upshur County. Continuing then, we have correspondence from Stephen Canterbury, HR person, West Virginia Court Security Board, informing Upshur County Commission, the Court Security Fund grant the amount of $2,360 has been approved for the purpose of enhancing the county's court of security. That's always a positive thing, receiving grants. At this point, I understand, we don't realize what the court of security grant is for, but we see that in some future correspondence. We have other items that are under consideration also for enhanced security at this time to be considered. We have Upshur County Tobacco Prevention Coalition, which has submitted to us a request to place within the agenda a documentation or pamphlet called "The Toll of Tobacco in West Virginia" article. We have Upshur County Family Resource Network Newsletter. We have the Upshur County Family Resource Network Directive's Report for June 2015. We have agendas and notices of meetings. We have meetings minutes. We have meetings, and we have appointments needed or upcoming. And the next regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission will be a week from today on July 9 at 9:00 p.m. here at the Upshur County Courthouse. Our first, again, appointment is Derek Burnside at 9:45. We have about 15 minutes, excuse me, 20 minutes prior to that meeting, so I would suggest we at least start paying some bills unless there's something the Administrator has for us to consider before that. Okay. So we'll lose some signatory bills. We won't recess per se, but we'll just be occupied and pay some bills here until our 9:45 appointment.
I will make one announcement. If anyone in the public is interested in serving on a board for Upshur County, the list of vacancies are on the bottom of the agenda. You can find them online at upshurcounty.org. If you scroll to the bottom of the website, there's a link for agendas and minutes. If you click on agendas and look at our latest one that is posted, which would be for today, those appointments needed or upcoming are listed as number nine on the agenda. And a simple letter of interest can be sent to the Commission if someone is interested in serving on those boards.
Very good. Thank you. There's always a need for people on the courts. We are now back from recess, and it's 10 o'clock, and we have Representatives Donald Delaney, Ambulance Administrator, Emergency Site Protection LLC, to make a formal introduction to Upshur County. Mr. Delaney, I think you've been here before us before, maybe a month or so ago, if I recall. Is that accurate?
Actually, it's a little bit further than that, sir, and I apologize. I'm Shane Zimmerman, Northeast Regional Director, Emergency Site Protection. Mr. Delaney, as we were parking, was called away. So he apologized for my little eager this morning, so I'll be presenting on his behalf.
You're Mr. Zimmerman?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, good morning, Commissioners and everyone. As you mentioned just earlier, we did, in fact, meet with you folks on March 19th earlier this year, and we'd like to thank you for that opportunity that we had at that time. And we are pleased to announce that at that time, we were applying for a West Virginia OEMS licensure. As of June 2nd this year, we've been licensed by the West Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services, and we are in operation as an advanced life support ambulance service, and we are already exceeding our initial projections. We'd also like to announce that Emergency Site Protection has relocated our base of operations from Jane-Lou to Upshur County, as we earlier mentioned this year that we would be doing so. Our new location is 646 Hall Road. It is in Buchanan, it's just outside the city limits, next to the cemetery. That's all. We will be housing all of our West Virginia and regional operations out of there, all of our divisions. We have fire services, safety services, and ambulance services all be operating on one location. We have brought, for your records, if you'd like, I brought a copy of our West Virginia OEMS license and a copy of our credential information systems profile that indicates our new address and credentials. Here with one second. Currently, our company has 46 personnel in the West Virginia operations with 23 dedicated to our fire and ambulance divisions. Our Emergency Medical Director is Dr. Kahn from Helkins, and he is practicing emergency medicine. If you recall, back in March, we did mention that our intent was to be in addition to and rather than in place of, and we would just like to reiterate that we were not here to compete against any local services, but to be in addition to those services if needed. We will be offering our EMS, fire, safety, and community outreach programs through our developing education department and classroom at our new facility. We are currently undergoing just some minor remodeling over there as a different company at the time. We're going through just a little bit of remodeling. We will be requesting to join the local Chamber of Commerce, and we are currently on the Lewis Upshur Emergency Planning Committee, and we plan on being active with as many community organizations as possible. Today, we respectfully request the following of the Upshur County Commissioners to consider. Number one, we respectfully request that the Upshur County Commissioners recognize emergency site protections as an emergency services provider that is licensed in the state of West Virginia and has a base of operations in Upshur County. The intent of this recognition is such that it does not commit us, either one of us, into a binding agreement, but it provides for the following. The recognition will allow us to submit a request to be able to use the statewide interoperable radio network or the Siren system. We actually already have the radios, they're just not programmed yet. That gives us the ability to communicate with other emergency services in a time of need. We've also begun the process of applying for our own FCC license and frequency so that we can have our own communications in addition to provide those to other agencies for direct contact if needed.
What light, what are you using now for a radio frequency? Is it dedicated to some other organization or...?
Currently, we are using 154.235, which is the same frequency as, that's the MedCom channel. We strictly use that for communications and facilities. We don't use it for inter-vehicle or inter- company communications. We strictly on transports.
So you requested, you requested your own dedicated frequency for your department or your company?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Since the Upshur County 911, that, I'm sorry, request number two. We respectfully request that since the Upshur County 911 Center is under the direction of the County Commissioners, we would like the County Commissioners to allow Upshur County 911 to activate or notify us if any of our services are specifically requested. This does not mean that we'll be utilizing the county 911 as a point of contact, but rather if the local agencies are committed and their, on all their units are unavailable, et cetera, that the 911 Center receives a call, whether it's a 911 or whatever the case may be, and nobody else is available, that they can go ahead and contact us directly, either by radio or phone call. And thirdly, we respectfully request to consider in the best interest of the community and visitors of Upshur County, and allowing the Upshur County 911 Center to activate the next closest West Virginia licensed ambulance provider to respond to any request for an ambulance in Upshur County if Upshur County EMS is unavailable in either a specific amount of time or they predetermined that none of their units are available. So again, this is coming back to mentioning a backup to the existing services.
Do you have a suggestion for the amount of time? Do you have a amount of time that's going to be used in other counties?
Typically, from my understanding, is that from the time of dispatch to the time of acknowledging and responding to call, I believe, is seven minutes.
Is that consistent with...?
So anything in excess of seven minutes, if they're not available or haven't, or anyone hasn't responded, and perhaps that same would apply if a neighboring county is calling Upshur for backup and again, they're not available. Again, thank you for letting us present once again. If anybody has any questions, I can field those questions. But that's pretty much it for us today.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, sir.
Are you planning on having a MedCom duty at all times?
We have, yes, the, yes, we have, we are an advanced life support service 24 hours a day. We have an EMT and paramedic available around the clock.
Yeah, so are you only going to go on calls if the comm center calls you out?
No, sir. As of right now, as a matter of fact, we are currently on an interfacility transfer. That's why Mr. Delaney was unable to attend this morning. We've already been doing interfacility transfers from many area hospitals in this region as we projected, and our market study indicated back in, when we mentioned it back in March.
How do you get those calls?
Those calls, we have a local phone number to our station. It's area code 304-473-0990, and the facilities call us directly, and we have obtained the information from them, all the details, and then we dispatch, internally, we dispatch units to that facility.
After your appearance in March, at some point, probably about a month and a half ago, had a case to be over in Weston at a meeting, and I observed a couple of Dodgerage County ambulances parked in the parking lot in, at that plaza there, the cross from the Walmart, and it was obvious to me they were waiting to be dispatched to, you know, different locations, I guess, if, if a need be. So I'm assuming that, you know, there's, why Dodgerage County would be that far away from their normal location. But I have seen Dodgerage County ambulances in Upshur County transporting for whatever reason.
I've actually inquired about that, and it's been relayed to us from Dodgerage County personnel, that they are, they stage in that area while they're waiting for a patient at the dialysis center.
Oh, okay.
They delivered a patient to that location, they're just waiting for that dialysis treatment to be completed and then returned back to their district. I do not believe that they are on call at that. They're actually committed to a call, they're just waiting for the completion of the treatment.
Do they be transporting dialysis patients from, not from into Upshur County, you know?
To my knowledge, they're transporting Dodgerage County residents down, to the best of my knowledge.
Any other questions? Mr. Linger, would you like to address any of the questions or address the admission relative to some of the information or requests that you've gotten from...
I do believe that the Upshur EMS frequency on the siren radios, that is under the control of emergency management. They were the first agents... They were the first agency in the county, but I believe under the guidelines that they would be, they would follow the guidelines and would be accepted under that radio frequency on the Siren network, because that's available to all EMS licensed operators that operate in the county. 911 Center would like for a decision to be made if, over the weekend, they called and let us know they had a paramedic on duty, and we would like to know if we could use them in the case of a backup situation where we weren't able to get a medic that we could possibly dispatch them. We would like clarification on that, because as of right now, the EMS director would have to give his approval for mutual aid, since they are the current only one that we do that for, you know, and that we would like clarification as to whether we would have the authority to do that.
Since they are the, I understand, you said, they have the approval.
Yes. We would currently have to get the Upsher County EMS director's approval for any, whenever we have to page him out, when we cannot get a unit out and see what his pleasure is.
What does that require the commission to do?
I don't know exactly. I feel that you would, I feel there should be a meeting for all agencies and have some decisions be made.
It's not something we can do at this moment, right, from the?
I don't think so.
It probably requires some planning, yes, of course, sure. We're more willing to participate in whatever it takes to.
From what I gather, and if I'm wrong, you know, let me know, we should probably hold a request for you in a band spending special meeting, and we can set that up.
Sure.
We're the, hopefully not, hopefully in expeditious time, not delay in having that meeting. So Kerry, if you could coordinate that to set up a meeting between the interested parties and make ourselves available. Is there the other?
So that just be OEM, 911, Upsher County EMS, ESP Commission?
Yes.
We'll do that as expeditiously as possible. And any comments from the commissioners?
Thanks, Steve, for bringing that point up to us, and we'll try to address that as soon as we can, so you'll have some.
Make a decision today, but wait till we.
Thank you.
In the meantime, if I may add, they can still call upon us by phone if they, if like, you know, we can still, in the meantime, you know, all we, all we need is a phone call, we'll be there. And then we'll, we'll still go forward with the, a full planning and mutually agreement meeting, because we're all, we're very pro mutually agreements.
So we're all squared away there?
Please, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerman.
Thank you.
For your presentation. Thank you, Steve, for that clarification as well. It is now one minute to 10:15. Call your attention, it is now 10:15. We have scheduled Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy, for discussion acceptance of resignation. These matters may lead to the executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. Is there a request for executive session from either the sheriff, Ms. Adams, or any other interested party?
I believe that Adams would like to speak first.
Okay. Sheila? Take the podium. Don't take it very far.
Good morning. Well, I wanted to come through personally and to give my resignation. I feel that I've been here almost 18 and a half years, and I just think that it would be rude and impersonal not to come here and to say a few words. I've been with the county government, as I stated, about 18 and a half years. I just wanted to say that I thoroughly enjoy my job. I love what I do. I really like serving the citizens of this county. And I have always felt this thing that taxpayers, even though they have to be there and they have to give us money, they're my customers. And I have welcomed their questions and tried to help them, and I feel very proud of that. I feel very proud of the accomplishments of our office. I still will be in public service. I will be going to serve a very elite group of citizens that are married due to my heart, now female to three families, and I am exceptionally excited about this new chapter that God is writing in my life. I try to make it without crying, happy and sad at the same time. I have made so many friends throughout the county and throughout the state of West Virginia, and I just, I'm so grateful for that, the opportunity to have met so many wonderful people, and I'm really impactful. I want to say that I'm very pleased to have worked with Kerry Waller. She has just been an exceptional administrator, and I really appreciate her professionalism, and we've worked well together, and I actually do thank you, I can't imagine. I want to publicly thank each and every one of my sheriffs. This is the hard part. My sheriffs are very special to me, each in their own way, and I love each and every one of them. I was hired in by the former sheriff, Marsh, and I just want to thank him for the opportunity that he gave me to become a public servant and to serve in a county that I've lived in my entire life. I want to thank former Sheriff Sherman Baxter and Sheriff Virgil Miller. They retained me when they came into office also and allowed me to continue my work in the service of citizens. And last but not least, I would like to thank my current sheriff, David Hoffman, who also retained me in January 2013 when he came into office. I'm feeling a little guilty and a little bit like I've been faking him, so I'd like to talk about him a little bit. He'll be okay, but I do have a little guilt about that. He's very concerned about the citizens of our county, the safety of our citizens. In a place that I call home and he calls home, it's very important to be in this job position and provide as much support to your sheriffs as you can. The tax office is a large responsibility. But there's so much with law enforcement. He has a deep commitment to his war on drugs and wants our young people to feel safe. And I have children and family here, and that's very important to me, and I'm exceptionally proud to have been a part of that, even though I'm not a law enforcement officer. I can do my best to take the burdens of the tax office off of him so that he can be free now to do those things that are so important to us, to keep us safe and to keep the drugs off the streets. He's been supportive of me. I'm very passionate about my taxpayers, which are my customers. And as technology changes and as laws change, we're able to offer additional services to our taxpayers. He's authorized me to do several projects, some of which I will not be able to complete before I leave here. A couple of things that we have talked about and are putting in place is that we'd like to have online tax payments for our customers, upgrading our concealed weapons programs. These are things that are important services for our citizens. I have the fullest of confidence that he will move forward with these and make these things happen. And last but not least, I want to thank the tax office staff. We have five prime staff. The ladies in that office work so hard, and I don't know where that I, or any of my sheriffs that I've served under, would have been without their work ethic. They're, they're good people. They work hard. I have the fullest of confidence that they will continue to provide friendly professional service to our citizens. And I have ensured the county administrator and the sheriff that I will train to the best of my ability and new chief for them. And I want to thank the commission for the opportunity of having been a part of county government, and I just really, really appreciate everybody's support and make me get in my new chapter.
Thank you, Sheila. It is bittersweet, but I think the commission has always recognized, at least I know probably before I came here, that you occupied, and until you're leaving, will occupy, one of the more critical positions within the courthouse. There's about three positions in the courthouse, and I'm not talking about the county commissioners, but the day-to-day operations, the inner workings of the courthouse, what the public relies on to maintain the operation, the efficiency of the courthouse. There's about three or four critical positions, and you occupied one of them for about 18 and a half years, and that speaks volumes for you, that you would be maintained by the various sheriffs of both political parties. Shows, shows to your professionalism, and you will be missed. You've run a good shop. It's not everyone that can come to the courthouse annually and say they're collecting about 98, 90% of the taxes and do it in a very pleasant way. I don't think I've ever had it, and since I've been here, not had anyone, or which made from the county, citizens that have ever complained about either your operations and collecting taxes and the way in which you handle your operation down there. Military families that you're going to serve, I think, will be benefited greatly, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Sheila, I'd like for you to reconsider, because as you know, being a county commissioner, I agree with J.C., there is three key people that is very valuable to what they do for the citizens of Upsher County. And as you well know, I have always considered you one of them. And I will miss you, and I wish you wasn't gone, because you have been able to help me out and split the tax tickets, you know, make, show them what farm is and what's not, you know, and I'm thinking you're going to have to go to the assessors' office to get that done this year, but I know you went on and beyond to make and do the best you can. I also wish you the very best, and thank you for all the service you gave the citizens of Upsher County.
Thank you, Sheila. And I know we didn't get to work very long together, but I enjoyed the time we did work together. We'll get along with you, too. Would you like to re, uh, do I have a motion to enter into executive session? Is there such a motion?
May I say one thing first, Mr. Commissioner President? As sheriff of Upsher County, I'm sorry, I'm a little. I wasn't participating, I don't believe, but the last two and a half years, I don't know if I could accomplish what needed to be accomplished for Upsher County. And I'd like to say that, of course, with big business, we're like family. We've butted heads, we've disagreed with one another, but when push comes to shove, we were there and worked together in whatever project we were working on. With this lady at my right hand, at my right hand, she was always able to make it happen for me, make it happen for the people of Upsher County. And we're going to lose an awesome employee, and we're going to lose a dedicated, hardworking employee. I've seen that through my own novels. And I know, Sheriff of Upsher County, that I'm going to lose the best tax deputy in the state of West Virginia. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, it looks like ESP is going to miss out on the opportunity of working with you. But in your new endeavor with military families, if there's anything that ESP can do to participate in anything you're doing, please don't hesitate to give us a call, because our company is very pro-military, and military families, of course.
With that being said, is there a motion to move into executive session? Is there a second to that motion?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. The commission will move into executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9A-4.